Welcome to the Goodyear Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address the commission on both non-agenda and agenda items. The agendas and speaker request cards are located in the back of the council chambers. You must fill out a speaker request card in order to address the commission. Please hand in your completed card to a city staff member. You may check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to still voice your opinion on an item on the record without having to speak. In accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, please contact the staff member if you need any assistance. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The commission secretary will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and tell us your name for the record. You'll have a maximum of three minutes. The timer is on the screens visible from the podium. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting stream live on YouTube and online at goodyearaz.gov. Follow the city's social media pages so you don't miss out on all that's happening in Goodyear. Thank you for coming to this meeting and being an active part of your city. And remember, it's a great time to be in Goodyear.
Good evening. The Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting for Wednesday, December 4th, is called to order. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the secretary note the role?
Yes. Commissioner Hegidis is present, Commissioner Wang is present, Commissioner Smith is present, Vice Chair Sambito is present, Commissioner Booth is absent, Commissioner Nepomucino is absent, and Chairman Clymer is absent. At this time, a vote shall be taken to excuse members unable to attend due to extenuating circumstances. Is there a motion and second to excuse Commissioner Nepomucino, Booth, and Chairman Clymer from the meeting? I have a motion from Commissioner Smith, a second from Commissioner Wang. Please enter your vote. Motion passes.
Item number one is to approve the draft minutes of the meeting, the last meeting. Will the secretary please read the recommendation?
Approve the draft minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting held on November 6, 2024. Is there a motion and second for the staff recommendation? I have a motion from Commissioner Hegidis, a second from Commissioner Smith. Please enter your vote. Motion passes.
Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the Planning and Zoning Commission on any non-agenda item. Are there any speaker cards?
I've not received any for a non-agenda item.
Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on a non-agenda item? This is an opportunity for the commission members to disclose any ex parte communications they may have had prior to this meeting on any items scheduled for the discussion on this agenda. Ex parte communication is any outside communication commissioners may have had regarding items on tonight's agenda. Has anybody had any? No, thank you. There are two public hearings on the agenda tonight. As a reminder, the Planning and Zoning Commission is a recommendation board for council. The commission will vote on each item and forward their recommendation to council. Council makes the final decision on all of the items. Agenda item number two is the General Plan Amendment for the I-10 Citrus Gateway. I'm going to open the public hearing. Principal Planner Guadalupe Ortiz-Cortez will present.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Commissioners, Guadalupe Ortiz-Cortez, Principal Planner. Before you this evening is the major general plan amendment request for I-10 Citrus Gateway. The subject property is approximately 267 acres and is generally located at the southwest corner of North Citrus Road and West Roosevelt Street. The property is located west of Citrus Road, south of Roosevelt Street, east of Perryville Road, and a row of homes located within unincorporated Maricopa County, and north of Bembeurian Street and the Destiny RV Resort. The red dashed line on the screen shows the jurisdiction boundary between the city of Goodyear, Maricopa County, and the city of Buckeye. The applicant is proposing to change the land use designation of the approximate 267-acre property from neighborhoods to business and commerce. The existing neighborhood's land use designation permits various zonings, including single-family, multifamily residential under 18 units per acre, manufactured homes subdivisions, and commercial zoning. The property is currently zone plant area development with Las Palmas PAD. The PAD has an underlying residential zoning with the southwest portion of the property having an underlying commercial zoning. Within the existing PAD zoning, the property is limited to build a maximum of 750 units due to the restriction based on the property's location within Luke Air Force Base graduated density contours. The proposed business and commerce land use designation permits various zoning types, including higher-density multifamily, commercial, business park, and light industrial. Commercial zoning would allow uses such as automobile repair shops, banks, retail, restaurants, bus terminals, daycares, art studios, and funeral homes, among other uses. Business park would allow uses such as professional offices, data centers, indoor entertainment, manufacturing, retail, restaurants, and warehouses. And light industrial zoning would allow uses such as manufacturing, offices, parking lots, research facilities, and warehouses. The applicant has submitted a rezoning application for review. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property from the Las Palmas PAD to Business Park District with a PAD overlay to allow flex general, commercial, and light industrial zoning in parts of the property as well. Staff will present the rezoning application to the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council at a later date if the proposed major general plan amendment is approved. Staff believes that the proposed major general plan amendment is in conformance with the evaluation criteria provided in the general plan and detailed in the staff report. The proposal to amend the land use designation for the approximate 267 acres from neighborhoods to business and commerce supports the prosperous and innovative fundamental strategy of the general plan by diversifying the economy and responding to market shifts. The proposal also supports the livable and connected fundamental strategy by ensuring the city has a mix of land uses in a varied employment base. The proposal for the land use change does not negatively impact the implementation of any master plan the city has. And the developer is required to construct half-street improvements for Citrus Road and Bembeurian Street in accordance with city standards and is required to provide appropriate improvements for Roosevelt Street in compliance with Maricopa County standards. The applicant is also creating plans for a furnished road on Roosevelt Street to separate local traffic from traffic generated from the subject property. Traffic generated from the proposed land use change would be mitigated with street improvements mentioned and will continue to be evaluated with the rezon application and any future site plan applications as well. The proposed change in land use would not significantly alter the character of the area in a negative way. The property is in proximity to business and commerce land use that's existing, such as in the Innovation Center across from Citrus Street, where the property is zone PAD for a mix of uses, including light industrial, commercial, and office. And the property does have a site plan approved for warehouses on the eastern part of that Innovation Center site. To the west of the property in Buckeye, there are approved sites plans for industrial uses as well, some which include warehouses. Staff followed the state statute requirements to notice and provide appropriate state and county agencies 60 days to review the proposed amendment. Notices were also sent to notify property owners in the vicinity about the neighborhood meeting that took place and public hearings as well. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting in November. The meeting was attended by approximately 11 county residents. The residents expressed concerns with trafficked, blocked views, size of buildings, and landscaping. A resident requested that the corner of Citrus Road and Roosevelt Street is softened. Residents north of the property expressed concerns with their access into and out of their properties, waiting times to make left turns out of their properties, as well as vehicle and sight lighting trespassing into their properties. Residents expressed discontent with services in the area and asked if anything could be done to improve fiber optics, internet, or television service in the area. In addition, residents north of the property in Roosevelt Street expressed concerns with drainage in the area. Staff also received an email from a nearby resident this afternoon. The resident expressed concerns with traffic on Roosevelt and the surrounding streets, concerns with the noise generated from the proposed or future development in the property, wildlife impact, drainage concerns, speed limits on Roosevelt Street and the furnished road, concerns with timing and safe exits out of their properties, safe crossings for children taking the bus, light intrusion into their homes, and blockage of cellular signal and Wi-Fi by future buildings on the property. Some of the concerns expressed may not be able to be addressed within the parameters of the general plan amendment application, but staff will continue to work with the applicant on the rezoning application. The applicant is required to hold a separate neighborhood meeting where the solutions to these concerns can continue to be explored. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to hear any public comment on the proposal. No action is needed on the request tonight. The Planning and Zoning Commission will hear the item again next week on Tuesday, December 10th, at 6:00 at the Goodyear Municipal Complex. And there will be another public hearing before the city council on Monday, December 16th, at 5:00 here in the council chambers of City Hall. Chair Commissioning Members, this concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is in attendance and has a presentation available. We are also available to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for staff?
No, but I would like to hear the presentation from the developer.
I do have a couple of questions, though. So I know, Guadalupe, you mentioned a number of types of uses under the change that could occur. Would there be any orientation preference indicated by staff? Say, I understand it could potentially be commercial, it could potentially be light industrial. There's quite a variety of things, as you mentioned, that could go in there. Is there potentially the ability to say we want, we would push things towards the houses, the housing area that might be a little less intrusive? Commercial, in my mind, is more intrusive than industrial, but if all of them could be 56 feet tall, being the highest allowed, maybe we try to see if there's a way to make things a little more tolerable or a little more scaled down on that west edge of the development? I'm also concerned, I know you mentioned that the neighbors brought up traffic issues, and while I understand that their primary responsibility is to develop their immediate frontage, if this introduces more truck traffic, trucks are a lot harder on the roads and damage the roads more quickly. Are there transportation development fees that are paid? And how are those distributed and shared? So that this project, which is now going to potentially burden the area with a lot more truck traffic, which is much more damaging to the roads, how would that potentially be offset? Could you touch on if there's development fees that could go to future improvement of that road? Because all the way from here to the freeway, the road's built for cars, wasn't necessarily built for trucks. If we're adding a bunch of trucks to this area, if it happens to end up being warehouse, that's going to wear a lot harder on the road. How are they paying back for that? That was not addressed in the study. Couple of the questions, I'll go on after.
Thank you, Chair Sambito, Planning Commission. Staff can definitely explore your concerns more with the rezoning application. There was a traffic study submitted with the rezoning application, and that application is currently in second review, so we can further explore the impacts of the potential truck traffic on the vicinity and the roads. The engineering standards thus require that, and the general plan and zoning ordinance requires that the developer pays for the cost of the half-street improvements of their road and, of course, their onsite improvements. I don't have an answer on the development impact fees regarding streets, but I can definitely follow up with you and have a response by the meeting next week.
Okay. Is there, so if I hear what you're saying is we will work to try and make it a little more scalable relative to the housing, now that I'm looking at it from the perspective of, it really jumps out at me that there's industrial uses on the west side of the street, there's industrial uses or Innovation Center on the east side of the development. That one little strip of houses, they're potentially surrounded by 56-foot buildings on either side. I don't know what Buckeye's or the county's rules are, but they're probably similar to ours. I think we need to take that into consideration and scale that down, since this was originally and for 20-some-odd years supposed to be houses. So I'd like to see that we try to take that into consideration. I know in the information I looked at in preparation for this, we talked about buffering between the buildings and the houses, and we also talked a little bit about what happens when there's a setback. This happens on other projects when we have the potential for a really large building next to housing or something that's already existing. Can you talk a little bit about how that works? The closer it gets, or the larger it gets, the farther away it has to be, and some of the things that we can put in there to buffer?
Thank you, Chair Sambito, Planning Commission. Great question. Let me pull up a couple of documents that I have here. The Business Park District has a height limitation of 56 feet. With the rezoning application, the applicant is able to request a height increase. And they may be able to talk about that more in a moment. But the zoning ordinance does require that buildings are set backed for that district based on the height of the building. So if the building is 56 feet tall, the setback for that building would be would be 56. However, there is a landscape setback requirement as well, and that staff has discussed with the applicant that they would be willing to accept a stipulation on a 50-foot landscape buffer on that western side of the property. The, let's see here. For the commercial side, I believe that the landscape or building setbacks are a little bit larger. I have my development standards here, I apologize. I would like to correct the information that I just provided. So the zoning ordinance requires that if a commercial or business park district is adjacent to any single-family residential, the setback is 50 feet plus 5 feet of additional building setback for each foot over the height over 30. So if the building height is 56 feet, that is 26 feet greater than 30. Multiply that by 5, and the setback would be 180 feet wide building setback.
So a nice wide strip.
And that's in addition to the landscape setback, yes.
In addition to the building landscape setback?
So they will be providing the 50-foot landscape setback, and that does include the 180-foot setback.
So a nice 180 feet there?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. Just to have this for possibly the guests that are in the audience that may be living there in the future. If the future owners of the site, say we have a nice wind event, which we've had in our neighborhood, and trees have gone down, what would be their, they have this beautiful buffer that's now developed with 10, 15-year-old trees that are nicely nurtured, and they're really blocking their views and the sound, and they feel comfortable with that. If all of a sudden the trees are gone and they're not replanted and reestablished within a reasonable amount of time, what options do the neighbors have to make sure that that happens?
Thank you, Chair, Planning Commission. The zoning ordinance does require that property owners, property owners' associations maintain their landscape, and if it is damaged, that it is replaced in a timely manner. Neighbors are able to reach out to the city to let us know if there is landscape that needs to be replanted, and the city and the city's co-compliance team will work with the property owner or property owners' association to replace those trees or shops in a timely manner.
So our neighbors could actually contact the city for action?
That is correct. The city will then investigate and follow up with the owners, property owners, to get those trees replaced.
Beautiful, thank you. Would the applicant like to address the commission? The applicant has 10 minutes to speak.
I hope I don't need all 10 minutes, madam.
You're welcome to them.
Wonderful, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Madam Chair, Wendy Riddell with the Law Firm, Berry Riddell, 6750 East Camelback. My pleasure to be here this evening on behalf of Kurnet Rankin and the I-10 Citrus Gateway So the site we're talking about, you can see here, is kind of between these Maricopa County islands to the north and to the south, city of Goodyear to the east, city of Buckeye to the west. We are here, of course, seeking a major general plan amendment for the 260-acre site from neighborhood to business and commerce. One of the big questions you might have is, why? Why are we here? So I'm going to demonstrate. First, when you look at the general plan here, what you see on Buckeye's side there to our left is blue, that is all employment, those are all anticipated to be industrial uses. And I'll show here, show you here in a minute what has actually been entitled. And you can see, of course, with Innovation Center on the opposite side, what Crowe is doing from the old trotter track that has actually started construction, there's quite a bit of business and commerce here coming in the area. As staff mentioned, the site here was entitled as part of the Last Palmas Residential. One of the challenges, however, and one of the reasons we're here, one of the reasons why, is because of the Luke overflight. The Luke overflight make it very challenging to develop residential here, really restricts the amount of residential that could occur, and does not make this a great site for residential. In addition to that, you've probably heard that there has been a pretty significant shift in water policy here in Arizona that's come from our governors. I imagine that's not new information to this commission, but it does leave this property in a position where a residential subdivision is really a near impossibility. So those are two of the reasons why. And then probably the third most compelling reason is if you look at this plan, you can see the surrounding context of the development that is coming. You see, starting on the east side, what Crowe has actually pulled permits on and is starting construction, and you can see the commercial that is there as well. You see our site, we've kind of laid in what that could look like, I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that here in a minute. And then you also see, as you cross over to the Buckeye side of the street, what is planned and coming there as well, really up and down that street, north of the freeway and south of the freeway as well. So quite a bit of business and commerce coming here in the area. Madam Chair, you made some excellent points about how do we make sure that we sort of buffer the more intense uses from the residential. We are very aware of the context here, we are aware of the fact that we've got some Maricopa County residences here, and we have agreed already, I know the zoning case is not in front of you, but it is coming before you soon enough, that we will be limiting the business park uses within 300 feet of that adjacent residential. So that more intense industrial is only permitted in that interior. We are including commercial uses that would be allowed up along Citrus and some potentially along Van Buren, to add some commercial for all the employment that we see coming here as well. Staff did steal my thunder a little bit about what we have planned for Roosevelt. We've got some pretty exciting improvements that we're working on through the zoning application to ultimately complete Roosevelt with its own frontage road for the neighbors. That's a bit premature for me to go in here, go into here, you, you may hear some discussion from some of the neighbors, but please rest assured that is an ongoing dialogue that we are having, and things that we know that we're going to be working out and why that zoning case is not in front of you yet. I will also tell you, this is a very high-quality project, we're really excited about the type of employment that can be drawn here. Butler Design Group, who is no stranger to work in Goodyear, is the architect here. Just to give you a flavor of the type of projects that they do, this is the type of project that we're proposing. So as staff also mentioned, we do take community engagement here very, very seriously. We worked with Tom Bilstein, Bilstein Consulting, he's done door-to-door outreach on the surrounding context, we've had some individual and group meetings, we had our larger neighborhood meeting, and we're not done. We will continue to have these dialogues, meeting with our traffic engineer and talking to the neighbors in addition to another outreach meeting that will be required. Next steps, you know we'll be back in front of you, you're going to see a lot of us here in December, and then, of course, the rezoning is being processed by staff, and we will be back in front of you, I would think, as part of the first quarter of next year with that. And as I mentioned again, we will have additional stakeholder outreach and an open house meeting. With that, Madam Chair, members of the commission, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Does anybody have any questions?
Can you address some of those community concerns in front of us and, and the members that are here?
Sure.
Residents that are here with the concerns?
Sure. Madam Chair, Commissioner, again, realizing I can only tie these things to the actual rezoning, but I can tell you some of the things that we're working on in the background. I'm going to, can I cheat a little bit and skip ahead and show you? For example, on Roosevelt, and this is, I know it's a little bit of a difficult graphic to read, so bear with me, but we are working on a design where we can actually create a frontage road for the neighbors on the other side, then create a landscaped median in-between with just sort of select access points that would come down to Roosevelt Road, all of that installed by the developer. You know, we think that ultimately creates a much better condition for those neighbors to the north. This is conceptual, we're working through the details, but that gives you an idea of some of the things we're working on. We also heard a lot of concerns about connectivity, that having Wi-Fi out here has been a challenge. We have actually talked to staff about amending our application and being able to include wireless communication facilities, whether that actually gets included in the building, whether we put up a tower, but really helping these residents, maybe even potentially through fiber, increase their connectivity, because that was a pretty consistent concern that we heard. The normal concerns we've heard about landscaping, lighting, are all things we're also prepared to address through stipulations, as, again, as part of our zoning case.
Anybody else? So I really appreciate the 300, we had Lupe, Guadalupe go into detail on the distance, and she came up with the, I believe, 186, but I'm excited to see that you're being all even more generous than that.
She does math much faster than I do on the fly, by the way, I was very impressed. But yeah, we, we were, we recognize we want to be sensitive to the neighbors.
And I was excited to see the buildings, you showed examples of buildings, that was one of my thoughts as I was looking at this project and knowing that those homes are so close. In preparing for this, I drove around the city and I was looking at some of the newer buildings out there, and I was excited to see, especially on, some of the warehouses, they just got that front, that just big giant wall, and I can see that there's a lot of other opportunity out there with materials, or the way they form the walls to make it look like there's a different material, and the relief in the building, I would really like to see that broken up to give it a little more attention to scale. Or so that if, if they've got this 56-foot building 300 feet away, that there's still some idea that it's not just one big wall, that we've really gone to the effort of breaking it up, and some of the examples of the images you provided did a great job of that, but I'd like to see that carried especially on that west side, where they're right there adjacent to you.
Madam Chair, we agree.
Okay. And then I had one other thought, when, when this was going to be homes, I've had other residents in the community talk about trails and whatnot, and I believe that there was some type of trail system. Are you still going to respect that as well throughout here?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, that's a great question, that has also come up as part of our outreach. So we are including a trail system that will run on the north side along Roosevelt, most likely, and then connect down, but that has been part of our design as well.
And just a final thought, your little frontage road, I like that idea, and the, the residents could actually see something similar to that if they were to drive along Wigwam.
Yeah.
On the east side of Litchfield there, past the Wigwam Resort, there's actually some components in there that have frontage roads.
It's a great example.
So it gives them a little more privacy and like a frontage to park on, so I really like that you're doing that as well, and I can see that you're taking excess right away from your property to do that, so I can appreciate that as well.
Thank you.
I have no other questions. Are there any speaker cards for this project? Thank you, Ms. Riddell.
Yes, I've received two so far. If you have more, you can please give them to Guadalupe up here and we'll get you up here. For Alma Oliveras, did I say that correctly? Okay.
Ms. Oliveras is going to speak first?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so Alma, you come on up. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The screens will let you know how much time you have left to speak. Before you begin to speak, please identify yourself by clearly stating for the record your name and if you are a Goodyear resident.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alma Oliveres, I am a Goodyear resident at 18128 West Roosevelt Street. I am here alone with my family and neighbors to learn about this project and express concerns, questions, and recommendations about it, which most we have let the developer and city planners know. We sent it to, I sent some to Guadalupe, sorry, I know it's a long list, and I cannot read them because I'm going to lose my time, so, but she hasn't. First, I would like to say I am not against the project, but I wanted to share something. Last month, my family and I went through a very hard situation, where the only safe place I thought I could offer to my children and myself was our home, and I would like you all to help us keep it that way, a safe place for us to live. We also need to make sure the roads are safe to come and leave home for school, work, church, and any other activities we do. We are outdoor people, we have animals, my neighbors have horses, pets, we love nature, plants, bees, hummingbirds, et cetera. We enjoy being outdoor in our home. We love having people come over from church, friends, and family, and I hope we can continue being able to do that safely. I think a lot of my neighbors are the same as we are. If this project becomes a reality, I'm surely going to miss my mountain view, the winter sunrise and sunsets, and sitting on my front porch watching a storm or rain coming, because tall buildings won't allow us to see that anymore. Most of the families in the neighborhood have no plans to sell or leave their properties, as children and grandchildren are being raised in our little community. So please, I ask you to make sure that this project, if approved, does not affect our lives. I love Goodyear, I love our community, I love my neighbors, and of course, I love my family, that's why I'm here today, hoping we can work together in this to continue being a great city. Thank you for listening.
Jeff Levy? Jeff Levy?
Just wanted to get up and say that I'm in support of this rezone. I come from a family of industrial developers from the east coast, and I've known this property for a while, I think it was Lenore Homes had it for a while, and Lenore Homes don't usually back out of a development. And I think, I guess, maybe two years ago, a year ago, they backed out of this development, they were going to put, I think, five, 700 homes there. I know some of the people from Lenore Homes and with the airport and stuff there, you know, from the Air Force Base, they just looked at the area and said, no. I'm acquaintance with a lot of industrial developers, a lot of people are looking at You're going to see a lot more, even on the other side, where the state owns the property, you know, the prison, that 111 acres, I know there's people looking at that. So, you know, I just hate when you say warehouses are too close to home, nothing against these people, but I've seen where you've approved apartments right on top of warehouses that are up, especially over on 85, I call them the Ice Cube Houses, the bungalows right next to Lakin Park's Industrial Park. I mean, the craziest thing, so. I just hate when I hear this planning board saying that, oh, we don't want industrial buildings in a residential area. Well, bad apartments in industrial areas, so. I just want to say that I'm in favor of this, and I think it's the best project that could be put on this property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are all the speaker cards I've received.
Would anyone else in the audience like to speak? You can come up and then she'll have you fill out a card after. Just identify yourself as you start and you're good.
Okay. My name's Leanna McDonald, I live in the county island that is to the north, I have an acre, it's horse property. I remember when they were going to put $500,000-plus houses there, I thought that was funny, but okay, at least they wouldn't be really tall. I was the one that wanted to soften that corner there at Citrus and Roosevelt. That property is surrounded by retirees on one end, retirees on the other side, a high school over there next to the freeway, and us, the outliers, you know, the county island with the animals and everything on that side. So you're going to put industrial right in the middle of that, okay? The retirees, retirees, the high school, and us, with the, the horses and everything. The trail is a nice idea, I don't know if anyone's going to ride their horse there, it's kind of dangerous. She's right about the, the, the road. I think it would be a great idea to put some restaurants in there, some retail something there, like along Citrus. You already got U-Haul, the giant beaming light right there. If we had some, I mean, it may seem funny to you guys, but if we had some food on the, on the west side of the freeway, that would be really nice, because you're going to put in all these houses, you've got an H-Away right there, you've got all these people coming in on the west side of the freeway, there's nothing to eat. We have, we have nothing, we don't have anything, we have to cross the freeway, okay? Which now isn't too bad, but once you put all this stuff in here, where are these people going to eat at that are in these industrial places? There's nothing. We have to drive to Buckeye? Why not keep the money in Goodyear? Sells taxes, you know? So I'm just saying that, that area that, that we're going to put industrial in, if we have to have that, if we have to stare at that, at least give us something. That's why I said soften that corner, not a park, you know, I'm not saying a park, but maybe some greenery along there, a little wider, some kind of coffee place, a subway, they put those everywhere, right? You know, the kids from the high school, where are they going to get something to eat? They want to drive their cars somewhere, where are they going to go? The other side of the freeway? Do we always have to go to the other side of the freeway? And everything on the other side of the freeway is a chain. How about some mom-and-pop places in, in that little area right there, where I'm at, Citrus and Roosevelt? You know, that's all I'm saying. You know, and I don't like the height of the buildings, that's, yeah, a little much, you know, I'm, time's up, okay.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald.
All right.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to participate? Come ahead. Have you filled out a card yet? You can just let us know your name and then fill out the card after.
Hi, everyone, my name's Esther and I am part of the Goodyear, I live in Goodyear. I'm actually new to the Goodyear area, I moved, this is my second year here, we came from Phoenix. If it was up to me, I would say not to build the thing, I don't really know how these things work, but when I would live in Phoenix, I would have a, I lived in a very private neighborhood, but at the same time, it wasn't private, as we all know, the Maryville area is pretty dangerous, that's where I came from. I was even afraid to take my trash out, when a car would come, I would hide behind a tree and like shape myself as a tree, because I was always afraid of being washed or, you know, just people driving by as fast as they can in a small street. And one of the reasons why me and my family moved to Goodyear is because we were seeking that, that peace that Goodyear offered us and that security that we felt that we were going to get. And just my fear with building this thing is kind of losing that privacy and that peace that I hoped for. I'm not sure exactly the sound level, whatever it's going to be, but I think that that's one of my fears of that being taken away. I work with one of the high school districts around the area, and I do know that they're building the school right by us, and I think that when building this, I think they should really consider the children that will be crossing the street. I know our area is outside of the boundaries of the Aguafre High School District, but I know that a lot of our students are out-of-bound students. I asked them the last meeting if they're considering to put like a cross, like a, like a light for the kids to cross, and they told me that that's not part of their plan, so I think that that's something that they should really consider, especially with the new families coming out here, looking for a new, just opportunity in a different area, safer area, a peaceful area, and I think that one of the things that I love about living, you know, in that area is to be able to have that nature to look at, but now that, that might be taken away, I think that... I think that it's going to take away a little bit of my hope to kind of go home and just take my mind off of buildings, because I work in a building eight hours a day, five times a week. So seeing, going home and seeing that, hearing all the industrial noise from not just them, but like Amazon and the new ones they're building, it's just going to kind of disrupt the peace that me and my family hope to have coming to the Goodyear area. But if this plan does go forward, I just hope that they consider the new families that are moving over here and the sound levels and the safety that Alma was talking about, which I was also part of, which is quite, it was hard on us. So hopefully that safety continues in my home.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts, Esther. If you could fill out the card, Guadalupe has for you. Would anybody else like to share their thoughts? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. No action will be taken on this item at this time. Another public hearing will be held on December 10th for this item that will be put to a vote before the commission, and that's at the time that we will make a vote. That would be next week. We were going to, we're going to move on to agenda item number three, which is the accessory dwelling zoning ordinance amendment. I'm going to open the public hearing for that item. Planning manager, Christian Williams, will present. Good evening, Christian.
Good evening, Vice Chairman Simbido and Planning and Zoning Commission. Christian Williams, Planning Manager. And today, we are here to discuss a zoning ordinance text amendment regarding accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, as I will call them for short during this presentation. So the purpose of this text amendment is to bring the city standards into conformance with the passage of House Bill 2720, which was passed during the 2024 legislative session, which amended Title IX, Chapter Four, Article Six of the Arizona revised statute, adding a new section nine dash four six one dot one eight. And that again relates to accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. So what is an ADU? An ADU is an accessory structure to a single-family housing unit, and it's located on the same lot as a single-family house that's been established. It's self-contained, and it can be attached to the primary house or detached from the primary house. And an accessory dwelling unit includes a bedroom, bathrooms, and may include a kitchen or cooking facilities. So with the exception of the rules that I'm going to go to on this slide or on an upcoming slide, this ordinance would propose to allow ADUs on all single-family residential lots that have a house on them. It would allow one attached ADU, one detached ADU, and if the property is one acre in size or greater, it would allow, it would allow an additional ADU, so long as that ADU is restricted for affordable housing. The setbacks for the ADU would be five feet, and they must be located on the side or rear of the property. And the maximum height of the ADU would be the height of the primary building allowance. And in most cases in Goodyear, a single-family housing district allows up to 30 feet in One other caveat is that while ADUs are required to meet design guidelines, they are not required to meet the primary design of the primary structure. State law would state that they don't, so that is what our ordinance proposes. So I will not go through this entire chart, but I did want to just highlight some of the differences between casitas, guest houses, and ADUs. And just to cover a couple of these brief ones, ADUs may have a kitchen. They're not required to have a kitchen. ADUs may include parking if they would like to. And for setbacks, an ADU is five feet as well as a guest house. A casita would be the one that's different. All casitas right now in Goodyear have to fall within the main building setback. And then lastly, you can see the height differences, highlighting that an ADU may go up to 30 feet in height, if that's what the zoning district allows. Now, I did say there was an exception to the rule that I'd cover on a different slide, and that exception is the Luke Air Force Base vicinity box. ADUs are not permitted per this ordinance in the vicinity box. That is that red area that I've highlighted. That red area that you see cuts through half of Palm Valley Phase One, and inside of that box includes Sadea, Abel Ranch, Pebble Creek, Palm Valley, Two, Three, Five, Eight, and Nine, all of Canyon Trails, Hudson Commons, Cotton Flower, Las Briesis, and all of West Goodyear. All those areas are in that red box, and when I talked about the rules that we just had here, those neighborhoods would not apply to the rule because they are too close to Luke Air Force Base. Areas that are outside of the box are half of Palm Valley Phase One, all of north subdivisions in historic Goodyear, half of Centerra, a large portion of Estrella Vista and Glenmont Estates, a large portion of Cerebral Village, and all of Ballpark Village, and anything south of the Gila River, such as King Ranch and Estrella Mountain Ranch. However, while the city will allow ADUs in those areas, HOAs that already restrict them or may want to restrict them may do so. The state law says that cities must allow them outside of the vicinity box. It does not require HOAs to require them outside the vicinity box. So if you live in an HOA and you live outside of the vicinity box and you wanted an ADU after the January timeframe, you could apply for the city to have an ADU. However, your next step would be to check with your HOA, because if your HOA restricts them, then the answer to the ADU would be that they are not permitted. Should have clicked a little bit. And with that overview of the proposed text amendment, staff is recommending that Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to amend Articles Two and Eight of Goodyear Zoning Ordinance as found in the draft ordinance 2024-1616, and that would get us into compliance with state law, which requires we comply by January 1st, 2025. Happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions for Christian? I don't have any questions either, Christian. Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
I've not received any.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? I will then close the public hearing. Will the secretary please read the staff recommendation?
Absolutely. Recommend approval of a request to consider a zoning ordinance text amendment to Articles Two dash Two, Definitions Eight dash Two, detached accessory buildings, guest houses, ventilation courts, and portable storage containers of the City of Goodyear zoning ordinance to include provisions for accessory dwelling units and restricted affordable dwelling units, subject to requirements as reflected in the proposed ordinance 2024-1616. Is there a motion for the staff recommendation or a motion to recommend denial of staff recommendation by voice? I have a motion from Commissioner Hegidis and a second from Commissioner Wang. The floor is open for commission discussion.
Does anybody have any comments?
Speech report.
What's that?
Speech report.
Well, yeah, we're just trying to conform to the state law, so it's protecting the city. No one? Okay.
Please enter your vote. Motion passes. Recommendation of approval will be forwarded to City Council for the December 16th meeting.
Are there any staff communications?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to give you an update that at the last meeting, the commission forwarded a recommendation of approval for the updated design guidelines, and City Council did adopt those design guidelines. I also thought you might be interested that the city also adopted an amended city strategic plan, and we provided copies of that to you previously. So we'll get you some copies of the updated plan and point out some of the items that pertain to development services and planning in the community that you may be interested. So we'll bring that to you at the next meeting. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Katie. The next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting will be held on December 10, 2024, at the Goodyear City Hall Council Chambers at 6:00 PM. There being no further business to discuss.
I apologize. I'm so sorry. It would actually be at the Goodyear Municipal Complex. That was my mistake.
Oops. Thank you for the correction. There being no further business to discuss, this meeting is adjourned.